दासलाई माथीबाट को अनुर्धित पवित्रात्मक शामतली भरि कनो हाम्रो यूजुन ऑफ़ एस्केंड सेशनलाई तपाइले आशीमाई बनाउनुस् धनेभात, रोल्समै, सिवकाई तपाइको हाथ मुसुम्बिदै, सुरेख्छा चाहदै, आशी चाहदै छोटो धनेभात, पिन्तीमा क्रासनलाई मुक्ती दाता प्रभु येसु मशीको नाममा चढाउनुस्, पिता सुनी ग्रण कर्नुस्, अमीन
सो नाउ यू अलस्ट्राइन, जस्ट सिंग वन कोरस, अटलिस्ट यू नाउ यू विल वेक अप बिफोर यू नाउ, वी हिर्ड मैसेज, यस सो तेलुगर हिंदी अब, यू मी? तेलुग, यस, विल सिंग वन तेलुग संग सो यहाँ क्लैप
सिल्वचन
यू अलस्ट्राइन सो वेट, अन्ना विल डु डिस्पिर्टियल फुड फर्स्ट तेन आफ्टर डेट फिजिकल फुड, यस हुंग्रिनेस विल गो, इन फ्यू मिनेट्स, यस, थैंक यू
सिल्वचन तकरान
सिल्वचन तकरान क्लैप संग यदि न, हॅप्पी संग यदि न हॅप्पी एन्ट्रे कुन्छन, रिदमिक क्लैप्स कोटा बाड कुशी कुशी मनाउन्दा? आनंदमु प्रभु क्लैप्स कोटालाम
प्रभु अललान बोली, पाइकी उप्पंगी एगयो चुंडे संतोषम समुद्रपु अललान बोली, पाइकी उप्पंगी एगयो चुंडे नन्नो पिलची एन्नो मेलुलो जेसे, मूताना जीव मसगे नन्नो पिलची एन्नो मेलुलो जेसे, मूताना जीव मसगे कुशी प्रभु नाकोसगे, नाकीवितमे मारे आनंदमु प्रभु नाकोसगे, नाकीवितमे मारे शद्रिंची पोराडेदन, विजयम पोन्दा पलमोन्देदन शद्रुन यदिलिंची पोराडेदन, विजयम पोन्दा पलमोन्देदन प्रभुतो लोकमुन जयिंचेदन, आयनतो जीविंचेदन प्रभुतो लोकमुन जयिंचेदन, आयनतो जीविंचेदन कुशी कुशी मुझको मिले, मेरा जीवन बदल गया कुशी कुशी मुझको मिले, मेरा जीवन बदल गया मेरे दिलमे इशु आया, जीवन का राजा हुआ मेरे दिलमे इशु आया, जीवन का राजा हुआ कुशी कुशी मुझको मिले, मेरा जीवन बदल गया कुशी कुशी मुझको मिले, मेरा जीवन बदल गया
यू मेबी सीटेड? नाउ विल हिर्ड मैसेज, मायो डियर ब्रदर, विक्टर
शल वी प्रे लविंग हेवेनली फादर, ओ ग्रेचियस गॉड अवर वन्डरवकिंग फादर, अवर कॉवनेट मेकिंग एंड कॉवनेट किपिंग गॉड अवर प्रायरिंग एंड प्रायर आंसरिंग गॉड इन डिन मोस्ट वैल्यू एंड हाईली एक्सोल्टेड नेम ऑफ़ ओ लॉड एंड सेवियर जीसस क्रिस्ट वंस अगेन वी डू एंट्री इनटू थाइकोर्स दिस अफ्टनुन टाइम डिन अवर हार्ट्स फुल ऑफ़ वर्षिप रेज एंड थैंक्सगिविंग थैंक डियू ओ लॉड फर किपिंग अस इन डिन लैंड ऑफ़ लिविंग एंड ब्रिंगिंग अस डिन वेरी फेलोशिप ऑफ़ थाइ क्लियर्ड एंड अलसो ओ लॉड वी थैंक डियू फर डिन कालिंग गिवन टू अस टू बी इन थाइ फेलोशिप एंड ओ लॉड वी थैंक डियू फर स्पीकिंग टू अस इन डिन फर्स्ट पार्ट ऑफ़ दिस सेशन थाइ डिजायर इस डिन वी मस्ट बी डिन विटनेसेस ऑफ़ थाइन ओ लॉड इन दिस एंड डेज़, टाइम इस शॉट ओ लॉड वी मेबी गो अवे अट एनी टाइम, तो मेबी कम अट एनी टाइम, सो ओ लॉड हेल्प अस टू युटिलाइज डेट टाइम वेरी प्रॉफिटेबली फर डिन ग्लोरी ऑफ़ गॉड एंड फर डिन एडिफिकेशन ऑफ़ अदर पीपल एंड अलसो फर अवर ओन इंक्रेजमेंट थैंक डियू फर ब्रिंगिंग थाइ पीपल टू दिस मीटिंग, ब्लेस देम एंड अलसो स्पीक टू एवरी वन ऑफ़ अस, वी अर्न नॉट परफेक्ट ओ लॉड तो वी अर्न स्टैंडिंग हिर, तो वी अर्न कमिंग टू डिन मीटिंग बट वी अर्न गोइंग अन टू परफेक्शन वन डेव विल बी मेड परफेक्ट व्हेन वी सी थी फेस टू फेस टिल डिन टाइम डिन विल बी अप्स एंड डाउन्स, यत ओ लॉड हेल्प अस टू ओ लॉड, गेट अप एंड बी रिस्टोर्ड एंड कंटिन्यू ओ लॉड एस थाइ विटनेसेस थाइ पीपल मस्ट अर्न कम विथ सो मनी डाउट्स एंड क्वेश्चंस नीड्स एंड नेसेसिटीज, प्रॉब्लम्स ओ लॉड स्पीक टू देम, मीट ऑल थाइर नीड्स बाय डिन मिनिस्ट्रेशन ऑफ़ डिन वर्ड्स ऑफ़ लाइफ बाय डिन होली स्पिरिट स्पीक टू एवरी वन ऑफ़ अस अनप्रॉफिटेबल एस आई एम, आई डू अक्नोलेज माय अनप्रॉफिटेबिलिटी ओ लॉड पुट डिन राइट वर्ड इन माउथ आई अलसो मेबी फेट बाय डियू ओ लॉड स्पीक टू एवरी वन ऑफ़ अस, इन जीसस प्रेसियस नेम वी प्रे, अमीन इन डिन फर्स्ट पार्ट, वी हाउ सीन डिन डिन लॉड हाउस गिवन सो मनी कमिशन्स और वर्क्स टू यू एंड टू मी वन ऑफ़ देम इस बी माय विटनेसेस वी अर्न हिस हंटर्स अलसो वी अर्न हिस आरोस वी अर्न हिस वॉचमैन वी अर्न हिस अम्बेसडर्स अलसो वी अर्न हिस विटनेसेस सो मनी अदर मिनिस्ट्रीस अर्न डिन, जस्ट आई मेंशन फ्यू ऑफ़ देम एंड वी हाउ सीन डिन वन्डरफुल रूल टू बी ए विटनेस वी मस्ट अर्न टेस्टिमनी विथाउट टेस्टिमनी, यू मेबी प्रेच डिन ऑरिकल्स ऑफ़ गॉड नो उस, नो उस अट ऑल इफ यू गिव ए बाइबिल फ्रीली टू सम पीपल व्हेन यू गिव व्हाट डिविल डू, डिविल सी डिसकवर एंड डेट कवर, ओके बिग बुक इस डिन, ओके विल किप लाइक डिन, डिविल किप ऑफन टाइम्स बिफोर रीडिंग डिन बाइबिल, डिवाच डिन लाइफ ऑफ़ डिन पर्सन हु गिव इट ही इस गिविंग डिन बाइबिल टू मी, हो मच डिन बाइबिल वर्क इन हिस लाइफ व्हेन इट अर्न नॉट वर्क इन हिस लाइफ, अनडाउटेडली इट विल नॉट वर्क इन माय लाइफ, डिन इस डिन कन्क्लुजन डिविल कम सो टेस्टिमनी इस वेरी इंपॉर्टेन्ट टुडे पीपल अर्न मोर बोधर्ड अबाउट रिपुटेशन नॉट टेस्टिमनी और कैरक्टर रिपुटेशन इस व्हाट मैन सेस अबाउट यू कैरक्टर इस व्हाट गॉड सेस अबाउट यू इसन्ट इट? रिपुटेशन इजी, मनी एमएलएस एंड एमपीस एंड मिनिस्ट्रर्स अर्न हाउन्ग सो मच रिपुटेशन वी नो थाइर कैरक्टर इसन्ट इट? रिपुटेशन इस व्हाट यू अर्न डिन पब्लिक कैरक्टर इस व्हाट यू अर्न डिन प्रिवेट इसन्ट इट? पीपल टुडे डिन रनिंग अफ्टर रिपुटेशन, आई वांट टू बिकम ए सेलेब्रिटी अमांड डिन क्रिस्टियन्स अलसो नाउ यूट्यूब सेलेब्रिटीस अर्न डिन अमांड डिन मैसेंजर्स अलसो सेलेब्रिटीस अर्न डिन पीपल रन अफ्टर रिपुटेशन आई वांट टू बिकम लाइक डिन पर्सन हु इस हाउन्ग डिन वर्ल्डवाइड आई मेन पोपुलरिटी नॉट नीडेड अट ऑल इन डिन मोटोसाइकिल और इन डिन अवर ओन बॉडी, गॉड कम्पेयर्ड अस डिन बॉडी सम सीन पॉट्स अर्न डिन, सम अनसीन पॉट्स अर्न डिन सीन पॉट्स विल बिकम सेलेब्रिटीस, इज बिकॉज़ यस सीन बाय एवरीबॉडी, इसन्ट इट? एवरीबॉडी साइज विल फॉल ऑन डिन ओन्ली अनसीन पॉट्स अर्न डिन, डिन अर्न मोर इंपॉर्टेन्ट डिन डिन सीन पॉट्स विथाउट ए हैंड आई कन लिव, बट विथाउट लंग्स आई कन नॉट लिव बट नोबॉडी सीस डिन लंग्स विथाउट नोस आई कन लिव, बट विथाउट किडनीस आई कन नॉट लिव बट एवरीबॉडी विल सी माय नोस ओन्ली, बिकॉज़ अल फेर एंड लवली डिन डिन ओन्ली इसन्ट इट? डिन नम्बर ऑफ़ कॉस्मेटिक्स वी अर्न हाउन्ग फर डिन सीन पॉट्स फर डिन अनसीन पॉट्स डिन अर्न नॉट कॉस्मेटिक्स, बट डिन वेरी इंपॉर्टेन्ट डिन मेन नॉट बी सीन बाय पीपल इन डिन मोटोसाइकिल पीपल विल सी डिन बिग व्हील डिविल नॉट सी डिन नट विच इस कनेक्टिंग डिन व्हील टू डिन फ्रेम व्हील इस इंपॉर्टेन्ट, डिन नट इस इंपॉर्टेन्ट, इफ डिन नट इस लूज, नट्स विल बी लेट टू योर लेग इसन्ट इट? इफ डिन नट ऑफ़ डिन मोटोसाइकिल इस लूज तेन नेक्स्ट डेव व्हाट विल हापेन? यू विल मीट विथ डिन एक्सीडेंट, योर लेग, डिन नट्स डिन अर्न टू बी शिफ्टेड टू योर लेग, इसन्ट इट? सो नट इस अलसो इंपॉर्टेन्ट, तो इट इस नॉट सीन, तो इट इस स्मॉल इन साइज सो टेस्टिमनी इस वेरी इंपॉर्टेन्ट, नॉट पोपुलरिटी इफ यू अर्न हाउन्ग टेस्टिमनी, जॉन डिन बैप्टिस्ट वास डिन इन डिन विल्डरनेस ही अर्न ऑफ़ डिन विल्डरनेस, ही वास ईटिंग डिन, वी अलसो नॉट व्हाट ही वास कवरिंग असेल्फ विथ, बट डिन यू नो व्हाट हाउस हापेन? ही नॉट हाउन्ग डिन डिन रिपुटेशन बट ही वास डिन इन डिन विल्डरनेस, डिन इस नॉट पब्लिक डायस फर हिम बट व्हाट इस रिटेन इन लुक 32, आई थिंक सरनली आई रिमेंबर डिन लुक चैप्टर 3 वर्स 2, सम्बडी कन रीड इट लुक चैप्टर 3 वर्स 2 वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड केम टू जॉन इन डिन विल्डरनेस, वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड इस गॉड, इसन्ट इट? जॉन इस डिन विल्डरनेस एंड वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड वेंट टू डिन विल्डरनेस व्हाइ? ही अर्न ऑफ़ कैरक्टर ही कॉल्ड सिन एस सिन, तो इट इस कमिटेड बाय ए किंग लाइक हेरेट इट कॉस्टेड हिस लाइफ यत ही वास नॉट कंप्रोमाइजिंग फरेसीस वेंट टू डिन विल्डरनेस सोल्जर्स वेंट टू डिन विल्डरनेस टू बी बैप्टिस्ट बाय जॉन डिन बैप्टिस्ट डिन इस व्हाट योर टेस्टिमनी डिस हाउ टेस्टिमनी इफ यू वांट, आई एम टॉकिंग वेरी सीरियसली बिकॉज़ इन डिन बेरिंग अट्सेल्फ आई टोल्ड यू डिन लॉड ब्रॉट यू टू डिस कंट्री डिन इस अर्न टेम्पोरल गोल, डिन इस अर्न इटर्नल गोल टेम्पोरल गोल इस योर डिग्री एंड योर जॉब, डिन अर्न अल इटर्नल गोल इस टू बी डिन विटनेस ऑफ़ डिन लॉड इन डिन कंट्री मनी टाइम्स वी अर्न रनिंग अफ्टर डिन टेम्पोरल गोल्स नॉट डिन इटर्नल गोल्स फादर मेसे, अरे, आई परचेज डिन 10 अकर्स ऑफ़ लैंड फर यू बट डिन चाइल अलवेज वांट्स गिव मी चॉकलेट हिस आइज विल बी डिन चॉकलेट, नॉट डिन फादर विल थिंक ऑफ़ डिन इटर्नल थिंग और डिन लॉन्ग टर्म थिंग बट डिन अनग्रोन और ग्रोइंग चाइल, हिस आइज विल बी डिन टेम्पोरल थिंग इसन्ट इट? मनी टाइम्स डिन क्रिस्टियनिटी वी अर्न लाइक डिन लॉड, टेम्पोरल गोल्स आई एम नॉट नेग्लेक्टिंग, आई एम नॉट इग्नोरिंग नीडेड, यस, बट इट इस डिन क्वेश्चन ऑफ़ प्रायोरिटी योर प्रायोरिटी मस्ट बी डिन इटर्नल गोल्स बिकॉज़ गॉड ब्रॉट यू टू डिन प्लेस विथ डिन पर्पस फर डिन प्लेस मिशनरीस केम टू अदर कंट्रीस नाउ फर अदर कंट्रीस मिशनरीस अर्न कमिंग टू डिन प्लेसेस यू नो व्हाट इस हापेन टू डिन चर्चेस इन इंग्लैंड एंड अदर वेस्टर्न कंट्रीस वन्डरफुल बिल्डिंग्स अर्न डिन, 200 ईयर्स, 300 ईयर्स, वंस अपन टाइम डिन वर जाम पैक्ड टुडे इन डिन रोव वन पर्सन इस नॉट सिटिंग डिन इस व्हाय गॉड ब्रॉट यू टू डिन प्लेस आस्क डिन लॉड, गॉड विल ओपन डिन डोर्स, गॉड विल शो यू डिन वे यस यू अर्न सीन, सीकिंग फर जॉब्स इरन डिन, आस्क गॉड, लॉड, व्हेयर आई हो टू वर्क ही विल शो यू बिकॉज़ गॉड इस डिन हु ब्रॉट यू डिन थिंक डिन बिकॉज़ डिन इंटेलिजेंस यू हाउ कम हिर मोर इंटेलिजेंट पीपल अर्न स्टिल रोमिंग डिन रोड्स डिन इसन्ट इट? गॉड, गॉड पर्पस फर योर लाइफ सो टू बी डिन विटनेस एंड डिन लॉड, यू मस्ट अर्न टेस्टिमनी, एंड वी हाउ सीन डिन टेस्टिमनी मस्ट बी ए पर्सनल टेस्टिमनी डिन इस गॉड विथ यू, यू विथ गॉड जस्ट नाउ वी हाउ रीड 392 ऑफ़ जेनेसिस, वंस अगेन डिन फर्स्ट लाइन वी मस्ट अर्न रीड थाउजेंड्स ऑफ़ टाइम्स 392 ऑफ़ जेनेसिस डिन अल डिन लॉड वास विथ जोसफ, टुडे यू सी डिन लॉड इस विथ यू? यू अर्न डिन अवर गॉड विथ डिन ब्यूटीफुल बाइबिल यू अर्न वर्किंग डिन अवर गॉड, माय क्वेश्चन इस, ही इस गॉड विथ यू? इफ गॉड इस नॉट विथ यू, व्हाटएवर यू डू, इट मेबी लुक सो स्पेक्टैकुलर, इट विल यील नो फ्रूट टुमारो डिन लॉड विल से, आई न्यू यू नॉट, आई नॉट, आई वास नेवर विथ यू यू नेवर कंसल्टेड मी बिफोर डूइंग एनीथिंग यू अर्न डूइंग सम ऑफ़ डिन थिंग्स अन योर वोन यू अर्न बिजी बॉडी विथाउट कंसल्टिंग मी टुडे मनी बिजी बॉडीस अर्न डिन क्रिजेंडम सो बिजी डिन अर्न सो बिजी, डिन नॉट हाउन्ग टाइम टू टूक टू गॉड तेन व्हाट इस यूस? नो टाइम टू टूक टू गॉड एंड वर्किंग फर गॉड लेट अस बी वेरी केयरफुल अबाउट डिन स्पिर्टियल प्रिंसिपल्स डिन टैक डिन मीटिंग लाइटली, गॉड ब्रॉट यू डिन टू डिन मीटिंग अलसो विथ डिन पर्पस नाउ, इन डिन केस ऑफ़ जोसफ, इफ वी सी, डिन इस नॉट बाइबिल बाइबिल वास नॉट रिटेन अर्न डिन टाइम, बिकॉज़ डिन फर्स्ट फाइव बुक्स अर्न रिटेन बाय मोसेस, मोजेस वास डिन ग्रैंडसन ऑफ़ जोसफ मोजेस चेल्डर ब्रदर इस इल्लेवी, लेवीस ग्रैंडसन इस मोजेस लेवीस डॉटर जोकबेद, जोकबेदस सन इस मोजेस सो एवं डिन फर्स्ट फाइव बुक्स, डिन लॉ ऑफ़ डिन लॉड इस नॉट डिन, बिकॉज़ गॉड गिव डिन लॉ टू मोजेस बाइबिल इस नॉट डिन डिनर फोर डिन नो चर्च इस डिन टू प्रे फर हिम फॉरगेट अबाउट चर्च, नॉट एवं डिन सिंगल प्रायर पार्टनर इस डिन फर जोसफ टू प्रे एवं हिस फादर इस नॉट प्रेयिंग फर हिम, बिकॉज़ इन हिस फादर साइड जोसफ इस डेट इसन्ट इट? ब्रदर्स हाउ टेकन डिन सोकड़ कोट ऑफ़ मनी कलर्स, इज इट योर सनस कोट यू सी? इन डिन साइट ऑफ़ जैकब, जोसफ इस डेट, सो ही स्टॉप्ड प्रेयिंग फर जोसफ, ही स्टार्टेड वीपिंग फर जोसफ नो प्रायर पार्टनर नो बाइबिल नो चर्च नो फ्रिडम, ही इस लेव यू अर्न आई एम हाउन्ग सो मच फ्रिडम ही इस लेव लेव मेंस, नो फ्रिडम, ही इस कन्फ्रॉइंट टू डिन फोर वॉल्स ऑफ़ फोटिफर्स अवस नो मणि व्हाइ नो मणि? डिन सर्वेंट विल बी गिवन सैलरी, डिन लेव विल नॉट बी गिवन सैलरीज बिकॉज़ डिन मणि इस पेड इन डिन मार्केट एंड ही इस परचेज लाइक डिन अन अनिमल डिन वॉनर विल बी गिविंग सम फूड एंड डिन अनिमल हाउस टू वर्क राइट फर डिन मॉर्निंग टिल इवनिंग नो मणि नो बाइबिल नो चर्च नो प्रायर पार्टनर नो फ्रिडम, नो मणि एवरीडे टेम्पेशन सी डिन अदर साइड ऑफ़ डिन कॉइन एवरीडे टेम्पेशन, ही नॉट रन अवे ब्रदर्स एंड सिस्टर्स इन सच ए कंडीशन, ही कुड मेंटेन अनब्रोकन रिलेशनशिप विथ डिन लॉड फेलोशिप विथ डिन लॉड, व्हाट अर्न यू एंड मी? इन सच ए सिट्यूएशन, व्हेन नथिंग इस डिन, ही कुड मेंटेन एन अनब्रोकन फेलोशिप विथ डिन लॉड मेंस टुडे इफ यू से, ओ ब्रदर, यू नॉट नो माय कंडीशन, यस, आई नॉट नो योर कंडीशन जोसफ नोस योर कंडीशन जोसफ विल लाफ अट यू, आई एम टेलिंग व्हाट मैन, व्हाट यू अर्न टॉकिंग, इफ यू अर्न डिन माय पोजीशन, व्हाट यू वांट डून? अनडाउटेडली, आई नॉट नो योर कंडीशन बट योर कंडीशन इस नोन टू जोसफ जोसफ विल लुक अट यू अट लाफ, आई वास नॉट हाउन्ग फ्रिडम, माय मैन, यू अर्न हाउन्ग फ्रिडम आई वास नॉट हाउन्ग मणि, योर पॉकेट फुल ऑफ़ पॉन्स एवरीडे टेम्पेशन, नॉट वन डेव, टू डेव अल डिन 365 डेव इन योर फर 10 ईयर्स यू अर्न नॉट लाइक डिन इफ जोसफ कुड मेंटेन सच एन अनब्रोकन फेलोशिप विथ डिन लॉड अल डिन टाइम डिन इस नो एक्सक्यूज फर अस, रिमेंबर डिन डिन इस नो एक्सक्यूज, आई अर्न, इट मेबी वेरी हार्ड टू यू टू हिर ट्रुथ इस ट्रुथ Tomorrow, whatever excuse you may say. No, because of my child, I could not come. How many, how many lies we tell brothers and sisters, being believers. Ask Jacob, thirteen children walked with God. Jacob will laugh at you, you are having one child, I am having thirteen, twelve sons and one daughter. Yet I walked with God. Your difficulties, I don't, you, we people like, if I want to use the terms, I do not know what terms we have to use. How many excuses we tell? Result is, we are wasting our life. It is not a wasteful thing to anybody. If you fail in the ministry, God will not be put to loss, you will be put to loss. One man's failure is other man's opportunity, God will immediately will raise another person, God's work will never suffer. You will suffer, remember that. Saul failed, David is ready. If not, Saul's son would have become the king Jonathan. So many times we are taking our Christian life very lightly, though we know that it is very important. Yes, we are not having any other work to warn you, to warn myself. Maintain the testimony, what may be the cost, it is very costly. Salvation is free, sanctification is very costly. Repentance is free, maintaining testimony, you have to pay the whole price. So brothers and sisters. Even if you see the church history, even in the church history. Maximum God's work was done in the first century where computers and cell phones are not there. Where this civilization was not there, even a megaphone was not there. Maximum work, God's work was done in the first century when Peter and John worked. One day, there was a complaint against Peter and John by the high priest. We all know chapter two of Acts, church is born on the day of Pentecost. The Holy Spirit descended, that is chapter two of Acts. Chapter three, that lame man was healed. Chapter four, again. They were beaten very badly because the high priest told, don't tell about this man. Lord Jesus anywhere, yet they stop and they have not stopped. Peter and John and other people of God, they were badly beaten. In fifth chapter, within two chapters. Fifth chapter, the high priest made a complaint against Peter and John. The high priest made a complaint against Peter and John. What is that complaint? Acts five twenty-eight, Acts five twenty-eight, somebody can open the bible? What is the complaint from the high priest? See, the high priest is talking to Peter and John, what he is talking? Have we not commanded you not to? In this name, in the name of Jesus, you should not speak. We told you, we commanded you, who are they? High priest, the man who is having the highest power. Even a king cannot say no to the high priest. On that day, the high priest told Peter and John. Have we not, have I not commanded you not to speak in the name of this man? But what you have done, come on, ah. Yes, you have filled Jerusalem. That's all, that's all of my. I told you not to speak about the, with this man's name, don't utter the name of Jesus. But you people, what you have done? You have filled Jerusalem with the doctrine of this man. I like that word, filled. I think a dozen times I told in various meetings, whenever you read the bible, every word is important, don't neglect any word. Every word is written with divine wisdom. With finite wisdom, how can you say that it is not useful? You may not understand it, that is a different story. But don't say that it is useless, don't say that I can skip over this word, no. Every word of God is very important. Now here that word, filled. Filled means Jerusalem was submerged, totally, totally submerged with the name of Jesus. Jerusalem is not a village. Jerusalem is a big town like London or like Hyderabad. And just the church was born in second chapter and this complaint is in fifth chapter, just initial stages. Peter and John were poor people, we all know, they are after all fishermen. This is hypocrisy. Peter and John are like that. That shows that they are not having any fixed properties. If they go for fishing, if walk a few fishes, okay, they will have food. They are poor people. Secondly, they are uneducated people. We all know Acts four thirteen. They are uneducated, they are ignorant people, they have not gone to school, they have not gone to universities like you. Poor people, ignorant people, therefore, no popularity, nobody knows about them, who will bother about a poor man? Then the Jews are against them, that's why the high priest is making a comment. The Jews, they are against those Christians who accepted Lord Jesus Christ, that is their own people. How many difficulties the Jews have subjected these newly born again people, you can read in Hebrews tenth chapter, that's why. Paul wrote to that letter to Hebrews. There is a question whether Paul wrote or anybody wrote Hebrews, but the long way says, Paul wrote. Okay, whoever wrote it, it's all right. That is a letter written to Hebrews, the believers who are converted from Jewish background. They are subjected to the utmost difficulties if we read in chapter from thirty to thirty-two later, you can read. They confiscated their properties. The people who accepted Christ were made laughing stock before all the people. They were not giving their children in marriage to these people. To strengthen them only, in the eleventh chapter, he wrote about the heroes of faith. So, they were not having any popularity and the Jews were against them. Not only Jews, the Roman government was against them, we know what the Roman emperors, the Caesars did to the Christians. Not to the Jews, to the Christians. What was happening in the Roman colosseums, we all know, to the hungry lions, how they were thrown. If you go to Caesarea, now in Israel, even one of such coliseum is there. So, no education, no money, no popularity, Jews are against them, government is against them. But in two chapters it is written, you have filled Jerusalem. If that blame is laid upon me, I am the most happiest person. That's why I call it as a blessed accusation. It is an accusation, but it is a blessed accusation. Today, if you take Hyderabad. There are about four thousand to five thousand churches are there. Hebron branches are around three hundred are there. Some Methodist, Baptist, Lutheran, individual evangelicals. Altogether, altogether, four to five thousand assemblies are there, sad thing is, till today, nobody said. You have filled Hyderabad with the gospel of this man. There are many people, many pockets in Hyderabad. Gospel is not preached. In those days, two people, three people, you have filled Jerusalem. What blessed people are those people, Peter and John? And few other, a bunch of believers. Brothers and sisters. How many churches are there in London? Till today, nobody said that you have filled London with the doctrine of Lord Jesus Christ, no? Every gully, each church is, church building is three hundred years, four hundred years old, some are five hundred years. But till today, this blessed accusation has not come. In India, so many churches are there, in Hyderabad, so many churches are there. How are the fightings in your church? How are the court cases in your church, this is what we are hearing today. We are having money, we are having education, we are having popularity, many great people are there from among us. But what is that people are talking? Why they could do only one thing? God with them, that's all. Personal testimony. They are not having anything, only one thing, God with them. God plus you is the mighty force in the whole world. The whole world may stand against you, if God is on your side, you are the victor. Nothing is there, nothing is there, they are not sure of the next meal. But they shook, they shook the Jerusalem. What about us? We are having everything, isn't it? What all they were lacking, what all Joseph was lacking, we are having. One day. After Acts sixteen chapter, in Acts chapter sixteen, we all know. Paul and Silas were beaten very badly and they were kept in the Philippine prison. And they are human beings, when they were beaten like that, every member of their body that was painting. No proper medicines, no anesthesia, nothing like that. Moreover, they are treated as prisoners. Overnight, those, it will take time, they are all human beings, we do not know any bones are broken or so. Next day, when they were released, they were not having cars. They were not having even cycle, they have to go on foot. From one place to other, they have to walk. They have come out of Philippi. They have crossed Apollonia and Amphipolis. After that, they can come to Dacalonica, if you read seventeenth chapter, you can know. And after Dacalonica, they were, they were walking to Bariah. As they were walking to Bariah, what I feel, it is not written in the bible, my imagination or anybody can imagine. They were badly beaten, after walking for one for long or so. Silas may be telling. Paul byah, my dear brother Paul, I cannot walk. Because they have beaten badly my leg, I cannot walk. Because my leg is giving pain, they have beaten me very badly. Let us sit here for an hour and then we will go. Great men of God, they were in their tears because they are human beings, same pain. When somebody beats you, same pain they are also experiencing, they, they were bleeding. Overnight, the wounds will not be healed. So they were sitting there for one hour, again, started walking for another one hour. Then Paul may be complaining, Silas, I cannot walk now. Limping, they cannot walk because already they were beaten. Limping, limping like this, they are slowly going. Now they are approaching Bariah. In general, the children that are playing there, they must have seen these new two people who are coming. Children will be playing generally in the streets and others because we are all from villages. By seeing these new faces, they must have gone and told the elderly people, hey Papa, no, no daddy. Two new beggars are coming to our village, because they are walking like, they are like beggars only. They are not having proper clothes also. They are walking like that and they are going, they are going, their children are, oh, making, they are mocking, two beggars are coming. There are some new people are coming to our village, the elderly people have come. Elderly people have come and they saw Paul and Silas. Do you know what they said? They are not beggars, reh, they are not beggars. These people have turned the world upside down. Seventeen six of Acts, somebody can, seventeen six of Acts, what they are telling? These that have turned the world upside down. They have come here also. Who will say by seeing a man who is limping with wounds, this man has turned the world upside down? What is the reason? God with them, nothing else. God with you, this is most powerful equation it is. You plus God, nothing can stand before you. Those who turned the world upside down, they are not beggars, eh, you are all bacha, you are small children. You do not know about them. If they come to this place, our village will be turned upside down. Satan shouted, they are the servants of the most high God. Why? God with them. The Lord was with Joseph. Jesus was with Peter and John. Lord Jesus was with Paul and Silas. They turned the world upside down. They were not having anything, no money. I have told one or two times already, nothing is there. Only God with them, that's why personal testimony is very important. Let what may happen, oh Lord, I want you, Moses says, Moses says, if you won't come with us, don't take us. God gave a wonderful opportunity, Moses, eh, Moses, I will bring forth a new generation from you, I will kill all these fellows. And from hereafter, all the Moses people will be there, I will remove the name of Abraham, I will give you the name. But I won't come with you. Moses understood. What is the use of this name without you? You must come with us, then the Lord said in thirty-three fourteen, we all know, my presence shall go with thee. Lord, what is the use of Khanan, what is the use of milk and honey without you? We want you. Today, today, are you having this dedication, young people? I tell you, if two of you can join together with dedication, you can turn London upside down. I am not telling stories. People like John Knox in Scotland, in this area only, give me Scotland or take my life. That was his slogan. David Livingstone from Scotland went to Africa and he said, I can be rich without money. I can be rich without money. With money, we are poor. This is our status, state of art. Personal testimony. So that's what we read, the Lord was with Joseph. What about you? Secondly, I will go a bit further now. Forget about food. They could not catch the chicks so far, don't worry. Now, the second thing. Not only personal testimony, the second thing is, you must have powerful testimony. What is powerful testimony, is it word jugglery? Personal and powerful and so many other things? No, there is a difference. The difference is written in the bible itself. Personal testimony, God with you, you with God, one to one. When personal testimony is there, it will become powerful testimony, what is that? Now Genesis chapter thirty-nine, verse three, next verse, the Holy Spirit is explaining, I need not explain. Genesis thirty-nine, three. Ah, the slowly, slowly, I told you now every word, his master saw that the Lord was with Joseph, that's all. What is powerful testimony? Others seeing God with you, you need not open your mouth. Isn't it? His master, who is that, Photifer? Photifer saw God with Joseph. Photifer is looking at Joseph, Photifer is not an ordinary person. Today we are having bombs and missiles and rockets, in those days, no bombs, no missiles, the physical muscle strength. He is the chief security officer of the world emperor Pharaoh, how much is strong he must be? Photifer is a very strong man. Not only very strong man, very intelligent man. Because one is east London, one is west London. What does it mean, very intelligent? By seeing the face, he must read what is happening in the mind, brother Abraham is there who have worked in Gorkha regiment. What, by seeing the face, you must be able to assess what that man is thinking, what he is going to do, before he fires, you have to fire, isn't it? Very, he is the chief security officer of Pharaoh, not an ordinary post. In other words, Pharaoh's life is in the hands of Photifer. He is a very strong man, he is a very intelligent man and his sight must be very clear, isn't it? Our sight is not like that, our sight is like that man. Isn't it? Many, we are having some peoples, their goggles are so big, what is meant, minus five, minus six. His sight is perfect, he will see things as they are, because he is the chief security officer. Such a man was observing Joseph. We are all Egyptians, we purchased a slave from Israeliteish background. How he will behave? Very carefully, very carefully, he is observing Joseph without the knowledge of Joseph. Because Joseph cannot raise his head and look at the master, he is a slave. A slave cannot raise his head and look at the face of the master. Photifer is very closely, very keenly, he is observing Joseph. He saw a miracle, what is that? Once again, every word is important, I am telling, Photifer saw, saw means saw, that's all. Photifer saw the Lord with Joseph. Photifer is telling that the second person with Joseph is the Lord, he is not telling. Can an Egyptian person recognize the Lord of the Israel? Oh, he is none other than the Lord of Israel. Photifer recognized that. Whenever Joseph was going from one room to the other on his work. It is a big house, Photifer is a big man, big house. Without the knowledge of Joseph, Photifer was looking at him, how he is walking, how he is going, is he going to steal anything? All these things, all suspicion. But, two people are walking. And he recognized the second person is not a human being, he is the Lord and it is written there, Photifer saw the Lord with Joseph. When he saw the Lord. Because the Lord is so beautiful, he is altogether lovely. He saw two people walking, going to that room. And while Joseph is coming, two people coming and they are talking. When you are walking by talking with your so-called walkie-talkie. Can't Joseph? He was walking and talking, he said, oh Lord, okay, my son, don't worry, today the problem will be there, I will be there with you. I don't know whether Photifer heard the words of God or not, but he saw, it is written. He saw that the Lord was with Joseph, finish, what can he say to Joseph? Next day, what he has done, he handed over everything to Joseph. Joseph himself says to Photifer's wife, everything in this house is under my control except you, because you are his wife. I have to hand over all my. I have to hand over all my property to such a person. I do not know, Photifer must have accepted God later or not, I do not know. Because when he saw God, who will say no to God? And he recognized that he is the Lord. You have to think deeply. But nothing is written about his accepting the Lord as his God, I do not know. Bible is silent about it. But he saw God. And he has handed over everything to Joseph, Joseph, you are the master of this house. Only she is my wife, that's all. Joseph said the same thing, everything is under my control except you, oh madam, because you are the wife of Photifer. I was having a doubt. I shared it somewhere, I think in Ashford or somewhere. The doubt was, how this gentle fellow could see the holy God? Photifer is a gentle? God is holy? How could he see that gentle, this holy God, and how could he see two people? When one is, his eyesight is perfect. I tell you, I prayed for two months for this. Lord, tell me, tell me, tell me, I am not understanding. How could Photifer saw two people, two people? Help me to see what is the secret means. Suppose if I want to pray for something, in every prayer I will pray. Suppose if some sister says, Anna, I am pregnant, please pray for my safe delivery, okay. Yes, suppose if I say yes. Okay, okay is different. Suppose if I say yes, surely I will pray for you, if I promise. My habit is, in a day, suppose if I pray ten times, I will remember that. Lord, I pray for this, that sister's delivery. Then bless this food. Lord, tell me how he could see, he could see, he could see. After two months. He has not come before me and told, not like that. He has given me a thought, what is that thought? Are you foolish fellow, my son, my son. When Nebuchadnezzar could see four people, can't Photifer see two people? True, no? Nebuchadnezzar could see four people and Nebuchadnezzar is telling that the fourth one is like the son of God? Then can't Photifer see two people? Yes, Lord, yes, Photifer can see. That's why, everything, everything he handed over to Joseph, what a powerful testimony. So many Egyptian officers are there in his house. He has not handed over anything to anybody. All things are a powerful testimony. You hand over all those things to me and Joseph never asked it. First of all, he is in a big struggle about his life. What will happen to me, what, I do not know the Egyptian language. I know only the Hebrew language. What they are telling, I am not understanding properly, if I won't do correctly, I am a slave, they may beat me. So many fears. But he called, not an Egyptian, he called Joseph. All the things, you are the chief. You are the CEO of my house. Without your permission, nothing should happen. Oh. And God is with you. When others see God with you. This is the result. Without you opening your mouth, things will be done, because they are seeing firsthand information. They are seeing God with you, what they can tell? When these things are happening, the greatest problem came, what is that problem? Mrs. Photifer made allegations against Joseph. This boy, because he came at the age of seventeen, Joseph was there in the house of Photifer. At the age of seventeen, approximately ten years he was there, and again, three years approximately in prison. And after that, he became the prime minister at the age of thirty. Seventeen plus this thirteen. Approximately after ten years, why ten years? We all know in Bible, ten is the time of testing, is a number which speaks of testing, after ten years test came. After ten years approximately, when he was there in the house of Photifer, one day. She jumped over Joseph. Joseph, I don't want to explain, because you all know, many times we must have heard about that episode. Joseph ran away, the cloth was there in the handoff, the garment was there. In the life of Joseph, these garments played a very big role, isn't it? At the beginning, the coat of many colors, that is the problem. Here also, again the garment. Again, if you go to the palace also, again it will come, see? That is a different study, Joseph versus his garments. You meditate it, God will reveal you wonderful things. She caught hold of the garment of Joseph. Joseph lost his cloth, not character. He ran away. Till Photifer came, she waited and waited, in the evening from his duty, Photifer came and he started making all the fuss. Hey, you brought that, that Israeliteish boy. You told that, oh, he is a good boy. And you told that you kept everything under his control. Not only that, earlier what Photifer saw, you know, verse three, thirty-nine, three? Genesis thirty-nine, three. Lord was with Joseph. What does it mean? The prosperity of Photifer's house is because of Joseph. Not because of his hard labor. Because the Lord giveth the increase, that is in one Corinthians, we read it. All my blessings. My land is yielding more harvests. My livestock, my cattle are giving birth to more kids, calves and others. It is, and he observed it is because of Joseph, earlier it was not there, after the coming of Joseph only. These things are happening. Today my property is increasing, it is because of Joseph, not because of my intelligence or hard work, not because of my poster position. He understood it. He came to the conclusion, that's why everything he gave to Joseph. Now suddenly, this big storm has come in his family. One side, his wife is there. He called Joseph. Other side, the soldiers are holding Joseph. Because Mrs. Photifer complained means, and the complaint is also the worst kind of complaint, he wanted to rape me. Maybe he may be in his, that is, soldier's security. One side, wife is there, the other side, Joseph is there, and she started making complaint or allegation. This boy, this man, by the time he is almost twenty-seven years, because ten years are over. This man, he wanted to spoil my life. And Photifer looked into Joseph. Who is there with Joseph? Photifer looked into Joseph, and who is there? God is there. I believe God may be telling to Photifer silently. He has not done that. Photifer, if you see carefully, Photifer has not even asked Joseph, have you done it? Read the scriptures. He got no doubt at all, with whom a person is there, he will never do like that, God is there, he will never do like that. He has not, hey Joseph, have you done it? Photifer got every right. In those days. If Photifer suspected, he can kill Joseph, isn't it? Joseph is not even an Egyptian, he is an Israeliteish slave. He is a slave like an animal, he can kill. Forget about killing, not even touched Joseph. Why? The powerful testimony. He has not even touched Joseph. At least he can slap, right, po. To satisfy her, at least he can slap. He has not even come near to Joseph, because around Joseph who is there? The wall of fire is there. God is there. He is looking onto Joseph, God is there. What can he do? This is not the first time he is seeing God, every day he is seeing. He knew hundred percent about his own wife. He knew almost everything about Joseph also. Beautifully, the Holy Spirit has written. Tell who somebody can read in verse, chapter thirty-nine, verse nineteen. Verse nineteen. Verse nineteen. Holy Spirit has written in such a way. He wrote the subject, he wrote the verb, object is not written. On whom he was angry, now you decide. On whom he will be angry. Now you tell. Only two people are there, either he must be angry on his wife or Joseph. On Joseph, he need not become angry, he can give an order to kill Joseph. Or to beat Joseph. He has not even touched Joseph, he was angry. He was full of wrath on whom? That is left to our choice. He is according to me undoubtedly on his own wife. I know about you. I was observing you for a long time, every day you are talking so good about Joseph. Today you complaining. He must have two hundred percent was wrath on his own wife. Go inside, don't talk much. Then he asked Joseph. If you are there here, you will not have security, my wife is such a wicked fellow. From today onwards, because I fooled her before all the people, she will become more, she will intensify her temptations. Don't be here, I will put in a safe place, that is the prison. She cannot come there. Go to the prison. He asked them, probably the soldiers, carefully take him to the prison, don't touch him, God is with him. Now my point is. Joseph is going away. Along with Joseph who is going away? Why silent, so hungry? Yeah. If you are hungry, I will stop here, no problem. You also can go away to your prison. When Joseph is going away, this man is looking like that. God is also going away. From today onwards, there are no blessings. All my blessings are going away. This is the effect of a powerful testimony. In the whole of the episode. Joseph has not opened his mouth anytime. Not even once he said, I have not done this. Why? He was not asked. Yeah, Photifer has not suspected at all. So when he is going, God is going. Because I married this dirty fellow, blessings are going away. From tomorrow onwards, all this satanic atmosphere will be here, because God is not there. God is going to the prison. Surely he will become a big man, what I believe is, because he is the chief security officer of Pharaoh. With the special recommendation, he was sent to that prison. Already I told you, every word in the Bible is very important. He was not sent to ordinary prison, verse twenty, verse twenty. The people who tried to kill the king. Such criminals were kept in that prison, not everybody. Now you tell me, is Joseph worthy to go to that prison? Why the butler and the baker, such people have come? Because they tried to poison the king. Later it is proved, the butler tried not the, and the baker tried not the butler. So that's why the butler was spared and the baker was executed. But in the beginning, there was a suspicion which of these fellows. So the people who wanted to kill the king. Such people, that is, almost the people from the palace. Great people were kept in that prison, it is not an ordinary prison. To send a person who was working as a slave in Photifer's house. High recommendation is needed. Because ministers will be kept in that prison, maybe with all facilities. That's why I tell many times this example, different kinds of prisons are there. I will talk from Indian perspective, our two-town police station is also a prison, at this Kailanasthara, isn't it? District prison will be there. In either both, central prison is there. And if you go to Delhi, Tihar jail is there, very big people, Tihar jail. Suppose if you pickpocket two hundred rupees in Kotiba stand. The police had caught you. Have you stolen this two hundred rupees? Yes, sir, I have stolen. You must be taken to the jail. Sir, send me to Tihar jail. Will he send you? He will not send you. If you want to go to Tihar jail, at least two hundred crores. Isn't it? For you two-town police station. Not Tihar jail or nor central jail. For two hundred rupees, you will not be sent to Tihar jail. So to go to a jail, you must have the qualification. Understand? If you go to Tihar jail, go to room number one, Kavna is up, twenty thousand crores. Room number two, forty thousand crores. That's why in Tihar jail, in the rooms, ACs will be there, newspapers will be there, TVs will be there. Brothers and sisters. To go to that jail. Joseph needs a high recommendation. Photifer must have recommended, not any other jail, I am telling. Fati for must have recommended, not any other jail, I am telling, put in that prison because in that prison, my wife cannot influence. Because nobody will be released from that prison because they did things against the king. The most highest secure prison in the whole land of Egypt. To such a prison. Why? Because of the powerful testimony. Joseph has not opened his mouth at all, not even once, you read thirty-nine chapter again, after going home. Best place, because he knew very well, Fati for knew very well, very shortly he will become. The deputy superintendent of the prison, because already superintendent is there. He will be handing over everything, as he handed over everything to Joseph. That prison officer also will hand everything to Joseph. If you see carefully, if you read the scriptures, after some time, Fati for went to the prison with another purpose. Later you read carefully. Fati for went to that prison, at that time, Joseph was sitting in the superintendent's chair. Imagine the scenario, Fati for standing and Joseph sitting. Can you imagine? And Fati for have not felt for it. You are worthy, you are worthy to sit, I am worthy to stand. Powerful testimony. If people see God with you, that is a powerful testimony. Rahab says, when we heard about you, our hearts are melted. God is with you, nobody can stand before you, this is the testimony given by Rahab. What about you and me? The same purposes what God had for Joseph, maybe some of us. Because everybody is expected to be a witness. You are having everything. Can't you be a witness unto the Lord? Personal testimony. That is, God with you alone and you with God. Powerful testimony, others seeing God with you. Then you need not open your mouth also, that doesn't mean that you should not open your mouth. Without opening your mouth also, things will be done. In a wonderful way. God with Joseph. Fati for seeing God with Joseph. After lunch, very briefly, we are going to see one more thing and close, let us pray. Let us pray. Loving heavenly Father, our gracious God. We are bending our heads with shame, oh Lord, because we were not behaving like Joseph. With all the facilities you have given, none of the facilities were for Joseph, we are having cars. We are having bungalows, we are having jobs, we are having money, we are having good health. We are having Bible, we are having churches, we are having people to pray for us. Having all these things, people are not able to see you with us. Speak to us, oh Lord, at least some people. I know, this afternoon I am addressing Daniels, Jeremias, Aijayas, Ruths and Estairs. Raise some people in England. Raise some people from this group. To have a personal testimony and a powerful testimony. Speak to us more and more, foolish as I am, oh Lord, I could not, probably. Could not convey the complete message, what you wanted because of my human limitations. The Holy Spirit may explain the truths unto thy people. Prepare us for lunch and also for the post-lunch final session of this day. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen.